Good evening. My name is Nick Sturgeon, President of Speedway Town Council. It is June 9th at 7:02 and I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go ahead with introductions. To my far right is Town Manager Grant Kleinheinz.
Good evening.
Next to him is Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Next to her is Councilor Sean Harold.
Good evening.
To my far left is Town Attorney Ted Nolting.
Good evening.
Next to him is Town Court Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Next to him is Councilor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And Vice President Delisle is out of town this evening on work business, so it is the crew for tonight. We will start with item two, minutes, approval of minutes of the May 12th, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the May 12th, 2025 meeting, say aye. Any opposed? Passes four to zero. Item three, memorandum, approval of memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on May 12th, 2025.
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of administration session of the Speedway Town Council on May 12th, 2025.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
I just want to make sure it was, because it says 6:50 to 7:00. I just want to make sure that was right on the time. Did we meet for 10 minutes or was that?
We met after the, after the executive session, so.
And we went so long in that one?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I was like.
It was a much shortened meeting.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was right.
Good call.
I know we were there longer than 10 minutes.
I mean, I didn't write the times down, but we were there.
Longer than that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Actually, remind me, did I call for the?
We just need a.
We have a motion.
The motion's second. Okay. All those, or any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the, the joint executive session of the Speedway Town Council, Redevelopment Commission and Economic Development Commission.
We're on item three.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry.
You're good. You're good. We're keeping it moving.
Keeping it moving. It has been a long day. So all those in favor of approving the memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on May 12th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes four to zero. This is what happens when you take a month off. A little rusty here. Okay. Item number four, memorandum, approval of memorandum of joint executive session of the Speedway Town Council, Redevelopment Commission and Economic Development Commission on May 12th, 2025.
I'll make a motion for the approval of memorandum of joint executive session of the Speedway Town Council, Redevelopment Commission and Economic Development Commission on May 12th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions, discussions? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of executive session of the Speedway Town Council, Redevelopment Commission and Economic Development Commission on May 12th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, passes four to zero. Our next item is a proclamation honoring Speedway resident Thelma Todd in recognition of her 100th birthday. Grant, do you, how, do we read it from here?
If you want to read it from the dais and then if the council could gather in the front, we'll take a picture of Thelma.
So bear with me here. I'm going to read the full proclamation. So proclamation honoring Thelma Todd Speedway resident, whereas it is with great joy and admiration that we gather to celebrate the remarkable milestone of Speedway resident Thelma Todd, who on June 10th, 2025, marks a century of life, wisdom, and enduring contribution to her community and, whereas Thelma worked 20 years as an administrative assistant for the president of Burger Chef Systems, followed by 16 years in purchasing and R&amp;D for Steak and Shake and, whereas Ms. Todd has lived a life filled with love and friendship in the town of Speedway for 71 years. Thelma was married to Thomas Todd for 48 years before his passing. Her daughter Terry Colditz is a 1965 graduate of Speedway High School. Thelma also has a grandson, Court Mandrell, and whereas Thelma has been an active member of Lakeview Church for 55 years, attending Sunday School, working in the food pantry, and working in the office after her retirement. Thelma enjoys frequenting Speedway Public Library and the Speedway Parks Summer Concerts and, whereas the citizens of the town of Speedway and the Speedway Town Council wish Ms. Thelma Todd a very happy 100th birthday and would like to express their sincere gratitude and appreciation for this achievement, which is a testament to her enduring spirit and serves as an inspiration to future generations to live with purpose and gratitude. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Speedway Town Council does hereby proclaim the 10th day of June 2025 as Thelma Todd Day in the town of Speedway, adopted this 9th day of June 2025 by the Speedway Town Council.
Thank you.
Speech you want to get.
Stand up.
If you guys could come down.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, she'll get it.
I'd like to get, yeah, I want to stand up. I can stand up. Can I get my daughter in here?
Oh, yeah.
Get the big gun soon. Get up here, Terri. Yeah. Wait a minute.
Okay, here we go, guys. Here we go.
Did we verify that?
Wow.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, she was more than 1925.
The story.
Yeah. No copying.
Wow. Physically. We want to 100th day for you.
Thank you.
We hope to see 100 more.
That's right. See you next year. We'll update it.
We'll rubber stamp it. I actually went to her house like three years ago. She had a sewer issue, so she's hilarious.
She seems like a fantastic.
All right. Well, again, happy birthday to Ms. Todd. Those things are always very fun to do. All right.
They don't happen very often.
No, they do not. And I, I probably won't look that well when I'm 70, if I make it that long. All right. We will continue on with our business. Item six, special events request for St. Chris Summer Festival. It is that time of year.
It is that time of year. My name's Doug Ponser. I am one of the chairman for the annual St. Chris Festival. It will be conducted this year on Friday, June 20th and, and Saturday, June 21st. It will be from, we'll have food available from 5:00 to midnight on Friday and then from 3:00 to midnight on Saturday. Both days we will have entertainment with the stage that we're setting up. And then we will also have our usual casino, food, beer, beer garden, just all the great things that we usually have. Today, I'm here to request the approval of no parking restrictions along the north side of 15th from Lynnhurst to Biltmore and along both sides of Biltmore Street from 15th to 16th Street. Now, the streets are going to remain open because we don't have carnival rides anymore. So the streets will remain open for pass-through traffic, so that won't be an issue. We just would like to have no parking. In addition, we would like to kind of make some, in addition to you guys providing no parking signs and also the barriers, we would, we'd like to have four of the large road type barriers that we can put at our different entrances so people can't come, can't drive through. We would also like to make some of our own no parking signs to say that, you know, if you park here, you're, you're at your own cost to get your car back, basically. So we would like to do that as well. And then last but not least, we'd like a waiving, waiver of any permit fees that are associated with this.
Quick question. What, what time would the no parking restriction start?
Well, because we do all food prep in the morning at 9 o'clock, so I would say from that time until midnight.
On that Friday, that first?
On that Friday and Saturday. Yes.
And if this is approved, we'll do a press release like we've done in the past and the, the street department will place out all the barricades and cones and everything that, that morning. So they, they'll get them up and.
Have it marked?
Yep. Yep.
Cool. That's great.
Is there a motion?
And make sure the motion specifically calls out whether we're waiving the permit fees or not.
Well, I will make a motion that we approve the special event request for St. Chris Summer Festival waiving any permit fees.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
Is there a noise issue with it being at midnight versus 11?
The bands will be done at 11.
Okay.
They'll be done, they'll be done prior to 11.
Okay.
We're keeping it open till midnight just because, you know.
Yeah.
Trying to, everybody clearing out. We're trying to sell as much as we can.
No, that makes sense on the way home. That's a good idea.
But they will be done by 11.
No questions other than just really looking forward to the event like always.
So are we. We're excited.
It's always a good event.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right. With that, any other final questions? Then I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the special event request and waiving of any permit fees, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four to zero.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see you guys there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Item seven, resolution number 2025-08, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Speedway authorizing the exercise of eminent domain authority grant.
Yes. So this is in relation to our Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project that has bid, contractor's been hired, construction inspection engineering firm's been hired. So these are two additional parcels that we are asking the council to authorize the use of eminent domain authority. Parcel one is at 5660 Crawfordsville Road. Parcel two is at 5901 Crawfordsville Road. We have already exercised this authority with a resolution. I think it was parcel, I don't remember the number on it.
28.
28. We have secured parcel number 29, and I think the, one of the other parcels we have on your agenda tonight for approval. So these, and then the other, is it two more that are remaining? They are in negotiations, so we did not include them in this resolution. So we are recommending that you approve this resolution, which in essence gives us authority, Ted and myself, acting as your litigation manager that's called out there in the resolution, to move and proceed if negotiations do not continue in a positive manner. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the resolution of Town Council authorizing the exercise eminent domain authority, as stated.
I'll second.
A question for me. So where exactly, what pieces of land exactly is, are these parcels?
I did not bring the map. I, I provided the map the last time we have one, and I forgot to put it in the packet. So I'm not sure that I can tell you exactly where they're located.
Do you know, Grant, if, did, let's say we get two appraisals on each property? Have that been?
Yeah. So we have, we have done appraisals on all of these parcels. We've done two appraisals. We have made the initial offer. These two parcels have not agreed to move forward or even responded.
Right.
So all the other five have been in various stages. These two just have not moved forward at all.
And this property would be used as basically an easement for?
So in essence, all of these parcels are for easements, yes. It is, it's not a true taking, meaning we're tearing something down or changing something.
Right.
It, it's literally property that is adjacent to the roadway itself to make way for the sidewalk to be put in and the trail on the, as well.
I think it's important that the public knows too, that right now with, there's no path other than what those individuals make it, you know, and it's all over the place. So really the traffic, they're kind of out on their own trying to get across, either going to Krueger's or one of the restaurants and then work their way back. But this will be in conjunction with Hawk Systems and, or whatever.
Yep. There will be a hawk on Crawfordsville Road and on Cunningham Road to get people across to those apartments.
Correct. Yeah. Good.
Did we find where those were, you guys were looking?
So, yeah, I'm looking, is this?
I see the map. It's hard to tell.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, the address is basically the Speedway Supercenter, but will this be for the walkway or, and/or the stoplight that's going in?
Well, I do not believe either of these are for the Hawk signal or the stoplight that are going in.
Okay.
I think this is just for the sidewalk.
Okay.
That, that traffic signal, I believe, is already in that right-of-way. So this is in addition to that for the sidewalk itself.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess my question, Grant, is like, so if we did nothing, the project just sits and stalls?
It would, it would cause delays, which would lead to additional costs and potential of forfeiting some of those dollars if we don't meet our deadlines. We have not taken, done this lightly. We have kind of exhausted almost every other alternative. This is the phase that we need to do now to send to them to say, we have authorized use of eminent domain. Please work with us to get this finalized.
The goal is still to work together, not to just.
We will still continue to work with them. There will come a point potentially where we'll have to decide, we file the suit and get the court involved. And, and eminent domain takes a couple of months. It's not like you can get this done in a couple of weeks.
Right.
Yeah. Well, the last time I, we did this with the, the next day, we had.
We got a contact, yeah. And, and that one is still working, but at least we did get communication. Right, Ted?
That's right.
No comment. This is not easy. This is one of those parts of the job that I dislike. And I think with my political beliefs, I, I don't want to take property from people. But when you're doing a public good or an improvement that potentially saves people's lives and makes their life better, this small sacrifice, I believe, is what this eminent domain. We're not buying property to turn into a shopping center. We're putting in sidewalks.
One of the other challenges we have is we can't pay over a certain amount.
Yeah.
Right? So we really don't have negotiating power over a set amount of the appraisals. And so if we can't get it done for less than that, this is basically our only option.
So if the negotiations continue and they want a higher amount than we are legally offered, then that's when the, the court would get involved. Would they do a new appraisal?
Yeah, they'll appoint their own.
Yeah. So they would appoint new, they would go through that process. My guess is it would come back comparable to this, and then the court will say, this is a fair price and kind of move in that direction. We are going to be able to work around these for the near term. If this goes on for another two or three months, we're going to start to run into some trouble.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution 2025-08, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Speedway authorizing the exercise of eminent domain authority, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Item eight, approval of right-of-way purchase for the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project, parcel number 29, B&amp;W Plumbing. Grant?
Yes. So this is one that we have negotiated with and have an offer that is signed and ready to go. This is for parcel 29, B&amp;W Plumbing, in the amount of $27,500. If you open up the packet there, the warranty deed identifies the property itself as $25,000. The damages is $2,500 because we are affecting their driveway, and, and that will be rectified as part of the project. So this is all agreed to. I, I would ask that when you make the motion, if you're in favor of this, please ask the clerk treasurer to cut this check in the next day or two as soon as is feasible.
Authorize payment before the next meeting.
There you go. So that we can get, we would like to get this one cleared out, get it recorded and be done with it. So I'll answer any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion for the approval of right-of-way purchase for the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project, parcel number 29, B&amp;W Plumbing, with authorization of payment before our next meeting.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
Unless Philip can just cut the check tonight. Are they too aggressive?
I'll take one too.
I think we told them it would probably be, be the end of the week if, if this is approved.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those approving of the right-of-way purchase for the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project, parcel number 29, B&amp;W Plumbing, authorizing payment before the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes four to zero. Item number nine, approval of a master service agreement and task order number one with Lock Mueller Group for Professional Transportation Planning and Engineering Services. Grant?
Yes. So this evening, Dave Henkel is in the back from Lock Mueller. We've been working with them for about a year on, on this project specifically. What this task order and master services agreement is intended to do is they will help us put together a metropolitan planning organization, MPO, study grant, looking at pedestrian trail connectivity in the community. This grant is up to $100,000. The master services agreement and task order number one is in the amount not to exceed, or it's a lump sum, $7,000, for them to put the cost estimates, or no, I'm sorry, to put the application together with some of the information, write the narrative so that we can file this with the MPO by the end of June, which is the deadline, June 30th. Nick and myself met with them three or four months ago to discuss this. I informed the council about six or eight weeks ago about, once we got the documents. I think this is one of those things, we're going to spend $7,000 to potentially get $100,000 in planning dollars to then put kind of that next phase of the expansion of our trails and sidewalks, probably looking at things like the Georgetown Road connector, maybe up to 25th Street, or maybe even, even a trail on 25th, trying to improve the connectivity for the entire part of our community. We have a great system in the B&amp;O Trail running through the southern kind of half of our town. We would love to see how we could expand up north, and this is a long-term plan. This is a 10 to 15-year. We're not expecting this to get done next year or the year after. But the planning grant would then give us extra points when we apply for the next phase of the grant, say in a couple of years, and would improve our chances of getting that. We did this with the Crawfordsville Road project. GAI did the plan in 2020 and 21. We applied then in '22 and received the $2.5 million for that sidewalk project. So I'll answer any questions that you might have. This was reviewed by the engineer, a couple minor, or our attorney, a couple minor changes were agreed to, but this is in its ready, final form to, to get approved and signed.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the master services agreement and task order number one with Lock Mueller Group for Professional Transportation Planning and Engineering Services, as stated.
I'll second.
All right. Any comments, questions?
I, I just think, you know, that the more that we can improve the public safety of just foot traffic around our town, it would, it really enhances the livability aspect of, of that say-so. We're going to, we got, now that we have golf carts out there and we got to make it, you know, safe for all pedestrians, golf carts and traffic to be in or released. And then when we have large events like the Indianapolis 500, we got to get those people moving at a safe distance off of the roads instead of using the roads as, as a walkway. And the wider the sidewalks are, especially from Georgetown Road all the way up in front of Coke, all the way to Metalwood Park, it'd be great to tie Metalwood Park along with Georgetown Road all the way down to Main Street, just tying the, the town together along with the P&amp;E Trail and the B&amp;O Trail. It really would help make it more of a walkable community.
And the comment I'll add is if we don't go after this money, another community will, so.
100%.
We might as well go after it.
Yep. They are, the MPO is required to get these dollars out into communities, and if you don't apply, it's going to go to somewhere else.
So is there, I know you talked about a few options. Is there a specific, they're going to tell us kind of some ideas, or we're going to tell them or kind of collaborate?
That's what the study would be for, to, to look at different options. There, there's probably going to be a group put together to discuss it. So nothing's set in stone. I brought those up because to me, that's the most logical thing to do is Georgetown to 25th and over to Metalwood. I think that would be fantastic. But if there's something else that comes up, that would be in that plan and would be identified. And then we could apply for all of it or a portion of it or go from there.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, questions? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the master service agreement and task order number one with Lock Mueller Group for Professional Transportation Planning and Engineering Services, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes four to zero. Item 10, approval of right- Item 10, approval of right-of-way, excuse me, approval of right-of-entry agreement for well testing for school and, geez, I cannot talk tonight. My apologies. Approval for right-of-entry agreement for well testing for school town of Speedway's, or Speedway, Indiana. Grant?
Yes, so item number nine, or I'm sorry, 10 and 11 are kind of the same project. If you remember, we have been looking at continuing to explore and find new sources of water. As you know, most of our water comes from wells, although from basically the end of March through about November, we do take a lot of our water off of Eagle Creek from the reservoir as it flows down. But continually trying to find good sources of water. We also have a couple of wells that are starting to get at their last legs. And we have redevelopment plans for the former Town Hall site, as you know, from the comprehensive plan. This would relocate well number two and six potentially. We need to understand whether that property has good access to the aquifer. So with the schools, we've met with the schools. The school board has approved this on May 13th for the sum of $5. They have agreed to allow us to dig two test wells, six-inch test wells on their property. There is a a map in the next item. It's not included with that item. But those circles show the proposed locations. We're trying to stay off the track and the football field. That parcel property over there is not really used for much of anything. So that's where we're going to do that testing. The school board approved this. We're ready to go. This was put together by KGR. And if you approve this, we'll get that signed. I'll sign it and then get it to the school, and we will get that scheduled. The work would be accomplished prior to the end of July, which, as you know, school starts 1st of August, I think. So we're trying to get these test wells dug and understand the condition there before school gets back in.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of a right-of-entry agreement for well testing for school town of Speedway, Indiana.
I'll second.
Couldn't get them down any over than the $5?
Yeah, I tried. I failed in that one. Actually, Kyle had a much larger sum. So I did do a pretty good job getting it down to five bucks. I think I told him I'd take him out to lunch.
In all seriousness, any comments or questions?
The only thing that came to my mind is just coordination with some of the the youth programs that utilize that field during July type thing.
Oh, yeah. We we've talked to the schools, Eric Roseborough.
Okay, perfect.
So they will communicate and we'll try to stay out of their way and notify them, hey, when we actually have to be there.
Have to be there. They have to stay.
Yeah. We'll try to minimize the impact as much as possible. Because you're you're right, there are sports that use that area.
Okay. All right, anything else? If not, I will call for a vote. All those in favor approving the right-of-entry agreement for well testing for school town of Speedway, Indiana, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. Item 11, approval of proposal for hydrogeologic consulting services for testing, drilling and new production well testing at the Speedway Junior High School property. Grant?
Yes, so now that you've proved the right-of-entry agreement, we're asking you to approve a proposal with Egon Associates Incorporated, who also got some quotes for the well drilling aspect of this. When I say well drilling, the testing itself. We're not building a well. We're not putting anything out there until after we see the results. And then we'll have to negotiate that lease agreement with the schools as well. But Egon will do this hydrogeologic testing and consulting for the sum on page three of that proposal, $61,109.20, in addition to Bastin Logan Water Services, who will actually do the drilling in the amount of $19,000. So you add those two numbers together, you're right at $80,000 and change. This is under the amount that we budgeted. I think we budgeted $150 for the well testing in the 2025 budget. So we got some pretty good rates and proposals. This work will hopefully be, if you approve it, it'll get started here in the next couple of weeks and should be done, as I mentioned, before school starts in August. When is the actual start date?
August 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, Friday.
So we're trying to get that done and out of the way so that we know what's there. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval of proposal for hydrogeologic consulting services for test drilling and new production well testing at the Speedway Junior High School property.
I'll second.
Just to clarify, what is the total amount? Is it all three of these numbers at the bottom?
No, so it's, so on the, on page three of the proposal, $61,109.20 is the amount for Egon Associates. We will then have a separate agreement or contract with Bastin Logan Water Services for $19,000.
Okay.
So the total is $80,000 and change.
Just want to make sure I understood.
$80,109.20.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the proposal for hydrogeologic consulting services for test drilling and new production well testing at the Speedway Junior High School property, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes for zero.
Thank you.
All right, item 12, approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. I do have requests for both this evening. The claims are for the period of May 8th, 2025 through June 4th, 2025. They span 24 pages and total $3,574,099.65. The utility adjustments are for four customers and span two pages. And this is for a date range of May 8th, 2025 through June 9th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of claims and utility adjustments.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the claims and utility adjustments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. All right, on to our department heads' report, starting off with communications. Cheryl?
Cheryl made it through another month of May. I just want to point that out.
Do I look like I've aged since?
Reversed age, Cheryl.
Since March. Actually, tonight, I am just going to report a summary pretty much on some of the post-event information I have from this year's Rockin' on Main. So starting off, the goals for it that I set out when I start this are pretty simple. Deliver a fun, free, engaging event for residents and visitors. Create create positive business opportunities for the Main Street businesses and any other businesses that choose to be a part of it, along with providing a worthwhile opportunity for the participants that are a part of the event. So this year, Rockin' consisted of live music from two bands, a pace car display, our street, our Main Street businesses, a few not-for-profit setups and over 60 vendors. Vendors include artists, crafters, boutiques, food trucks and tents, and miscellaneous interactive activities. For some history, in 2022, I had 12 vendor pop-ups. In 2023, there were 19. Last year, that number grew to 40, and this year, we had over 40 participating vendors. So if I did my math correctly, Rockin' on Main vendor participation has grown grown from 12 to 60, 12 to 60-plus vendors. That's about 400% growth in four years. Additionally, attendance at Rockin' has increased about 300%. In 2022, we estimated around 3,000 attendees. This year, the number was over 12,000 guests. We don't have a definitive way to judge that, so it's basically done by our interaction, just viewing what's what's taking place, assessment with everyone that's that's a part of it, talking to the businesses and how their businesses did, and that type of thing. So as part of my post-event closure steps, I've sent thank yous to our local media networks, acknowledging the town's appreciation for the media coverage. During the month of May and a little bit of April, we received at least 40 instances of media coverage that positively highlighted the community. That's me manually going through and searching them, so I'm sure I've missed a few. And that doesn't include the media stories related to IMS. And a lot of those, they actually state this is in the town of Speedway. So we've worked at getting it out of Indianapolis, and they've done a really good job of noting that that's part of Speedway. I've reached out to participating artists, crafters, vendors, food trucks for post-event information, along with Main Street businesses for their feedback. So once I receive that feedback, I'll have a more formal summary that I'll provide to you via email. But so far, the the information I received is overwhelmingly positive comments from both attendees and the businesses. I've talked to unofficially Fun Days, Dawson's, Barbecue and Bourbon, Beerin's and Santa's Pit Stop, and they said they had really big numbers during the event hours. So that's part of the goal is, even though we've got vendors set up on Main Street, it's still pulling people into those those businesses. In the future, I'd like to find a way to pull them into the other businesses down the street, even though the event's not there. So something to work on in the future.
Don't you say we're going to make it bigger? Is that what you're saying?
We'll get there.
Two concerts, one on each end.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, there you go.
It was done before I was there. So, yeah, I mean, it, you know, it could. So all that said, we did experience some inconvenient growing pains. Despite the no parking signs and multiple communications, we still towed multiple cars from the event areas. And while we designed our vendor check-in process with staggered arrival times to help with some of that, that all kind of went to the wayside. When you have five towing trucks set up in the streets, you can't safely have people setting up and walking around with trying to get those cars out. So it became really chaotic for a while. 14th and 15th Streets were backed way up, which is a potential hazard or safety issue if, you know, fire police need to get there. So I spent some time trying to identify the issues, challenges and a few options we can consider for future years. And I'll discuss that with department leaders as we move forward. Next, I want to extend a thank you to the generous sponsors who have committed to supporting Rockin' on Main because of their sponsorships. It's 100% funded without using town money. And these contributions play a vital role in keeping it a free event for the community. In 2022, I had sponsorship commitments of $12,000. 2023, I secured $23,000 in sponsorship commitments. Last year was '25, and this year, we we pulled in $32,000 in sponsorship commitment. And I've actually received those checks already, so that's good. Note that these totals do not include the additional savings received by contracted Clayton Anderson. We have a multi-year contact with him, I've mentioned before. Clayton performs two-plus hours, provides the professional stage, lights, generators, sound systems, setup and production labor, and some marketing for zero expenses to the town. He does all that for free. So he's estimated that around a $50,000 value. I don't have that in documentation, but that's what he's estimated that as. And we save that annually for the event. With my previous year's budget of carryover, less Rockin' expenses and the movie on Main expenses, because that's, we hold the movie on Main to promote Rockin'. The sponsorship balance should be around accumulated of around $18,000, which is nice to have that in case I have a really bad year of not pulling in sponsorships. I'm hopeful and anxious that we get the processing of establishing a non-reverting fund dedicated specifically to Rockin' on Main. This important step will ensure that all sponsorship dollars remain allocated for Rockin' related expenses rather than rolling over into the town's general fund. Consequently, I did have one sponsor withdraw their annual contribution because they wanted the money to stay with Rockin' on Main, and I can't guarantee that once we move past 2025. That could potentially be a problem if we don't have an allocated fund for expenses and revenue. This basically just reflects the commitment to transparency, accountability and continued investment in the event to continue that. A few additional thank yous. While planning and executing Rockin' on Main is led by the Communications Department, there are so many to thank for their support. Tried to detail them using a little more time here, and I apologize if I've missed anyone. Street Department, Rob Wetnike and Jared Sutton and their crew. Speedway Executive Assistant, Eder Lopez, was a huge help this year. Speedway Economic Development Director, Macau Markley, was on on hand doing parking and registration and all kinds of things for us. Speedway PD, Chief Upchurch, Stephanie Chief Alexander and Dine, along with Lieutenant Killian and all of the officers that were on site that night to help. Speedway Code Enforcement, they pretty much run the the towing portion of it, so we can't do it without them getting rid of the cars that don't get moved. John Merritt, John Reichley and John Deal. Speedway Parks and Rec Manager, Tammy Smith. She helped with a lot of the parking and then onsite items. Speedway Fire Department, Chief Fishburne and Assistant Milhorne. They're always there for resources for public safety issues or, you know, emergency assistance. SCTV Community Television, Bill P. and Brian Pierce. They did some great videos of it promoting it and during the night. Town Manager, Grant Kleinhands, and then Town Council. You all graciously took all the media interviews because I don't want to be in front of the camera, so thank you for that. I can't forget our incredible community volunteer groups and individuals who stepped up to help with the setup and the cleanup. Speedway High School Baseball Team, the Swim Team, Speedway Animal Rescue, the Chamber of Commerce, a new church is coming in town, Providence Church. They have three volunteers that were a huge help in setup. Artist Adwan Newman helped me with some of the the prep of the vendors. Resident Dakota Roberts was a big help that day, setting up and taking kind of the lead in a lot of the registration. I put a note on Facebook saying I could use some community help, and he was right there, so that was wonderful. And then I'm going to mention my daughter and son-in-law. They have been on site the last four years, and and again, they were helpful for it. Without these volunteers, the Department of Wine could not pull this off. Managing the and planning and executing the Rockin' on Main is a significant workload for one person to handle. To clarify that, in April and May, I worked 168 additional hours beyond my regular salaried 40-hour work weeks to keep up. That was 72 hours extra in April and 96 in May. So I probably should apologize now for those 1:00 and 2:00 a.m. emails that you were getting from me. I I just do this out of the commitment to make this a success because it's not going to happen if I'm not putting in those hours. Honestly, I fear this pace is unsustainable long-term. I would love to see a conversation for a full, a year-round, part-time assistant to help with specifically event planning so that we can grow and focus on communication efforts outside of event planning. So that is all I have. That was a long report. Thank you for the time. And I'll answer any questions anyone has.
No, I just want to say that I've heard nothing but positive comments about Rockin' on Main this year.
Thank you.
I mean, it's, I think you knocked it out of the park. I I think the public really liked the variety of vendors that were there. And I know my wife did. But more so, I I think there's a whole untapped area, and that's all the campers. You know, the IMS was sold out, and they're all looking for something to do. We just need to get some flyers sent out, and guys like the Lions Club and a lot of other people could be handing those out as they're checking in and make it even busier down on Main Street.
That's a good idea.
Well, let's say on the media coverage, I know Fox 59 being one of, you know, because Fox had the the race this year, they just ate up the opportunity. And they were, I mean, every time that they wanted to speak, it's like, talk about Rockin' on Main, talk about what's going on in the town. And I thought, and maybe because Sarah and I did a majority of those, it felt like every week, you know, there was, and Grant was interviewed too one morning. But the 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 positive attention on the town this year was, in the almost 20 years that I've been here, I thought was just more than it has ever been. And I, hopefully, that will help feed in all the other things that are going on and and not only make Speedway the destination in May, but year-round as well.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of that was directly related to the outreach that you did because I know that you shared, you know, story ideas and different things and and really tried to push that. So thank you for for everything you've done there. I really loved, I'm I'm a project manager, and so I really loved, you know, the the lessons learned portion that that you were thinking. Because there's always things we can improve, no matter how great it is.
I know.
And so, so keep up the good good work. Amazing job this year. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, I love the positive feedback, but we can't make it better or grow it or improvement if I don't hear what didn't work.
Exactly.
And it's great when they can give me suggestions or ideas, and a couple perhaps, so. And it's great when they can give me suggestions or ideas, and a couple perhaps, so.
Yeah, that's great.
It's good.
Any other questions? Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Next up, Economic Development. Kyle.
Thank you, President Sturgeon and council members. Yeah, Kyle Markley, Economic Development Director. I'll start. We are also applying for the NPO Study Grant. Ours is gonna be from 16th and Main down to 16th and Mickley. We're gonna be looking at street improvements for non-vehicular and vehicle along that route. Look for any connections down into the parks, schools, things like that. Those are due July 1st, so we are starting to get data and get that study ready. We got a, the survey completed for Main Street. We are now gonna be moving to the design phase. Right now, we've got a proposal from Kieser Consulting. We'll be taking that to the SRC meeting at the June 16th hearing. Right now, estimated time for construction along Main Street there is six to seven months is, that's a good estimate. We just had, the SRC just did a special session for the TIF excess assessed evaluation. That is due to the DLGF by June 15th every year. We had a analysis done of our TIF districts and by Cronin Associates. None of those TIF districts came in above the 200% threshold, so we are not gonna be passing any funds for 2026 to the taxing units, so we can keep that money in the TIF, and we can continue to do the projects that we need to do to improve Speedway. We got the study, street study done at 25th and High School. We are currently reviewing with Rob from Street Department, and we'll be discussing with SRC on possible improvements to the Founder Square area to lessen the traffic congestion that happens there, mostly from the car wash and just high volume of people that are going into that area. Last thing I have, just a quick update on the Roundabout. We are still finishing contract negotiations with the contractor. We'll hope to be done with that this week. Contractor and everybody is eager to get started on that. We hope to start that in the next week or two for construction. During construction, we are not planning, as of today, to have any street closures or anything like that. The Roundabout is fairly large, so there's plenty of room for the workers to get in and out. Should not expect any big delays along there. There may just need to be a flagger here and there to stop for a track coming in onto the Roundabout. Once they unload, load, whatever they need to do, they'll go right out. And, yeah, work should be able to proceed without any right-of-way interference.
Any questions, comments for Kyle? Now, correct me if I'm wrong, this is actually your first council meeting that you're presenting, so.
Yeah, yeah. Hope I did okay.
You did great.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, welcome, and thank you for hitting the ground running. Doing a good job so far.
Been a month.
Drink it through, Fire.
I appreciate you.
All right. Thanks, Kyle. Next up, Police with Chief Upchurch.
Good evening, Council. As we all know, we've concluded another successful Indy 500 race event. The month of May is a long event. We just want to thank all of our public safety partners from the State Police, IMPD, Sheriff's Department, and all of our federal partners, and the medical fire aspect of that. We couldn't do it without all those folks. Our Public Safety Group, we will be meeting later this month, the Law Enforcement Section, to discuss our traffic plan and make adjustments and plans for improvement, and that, we always review that each year to try to improve. We are also beginning our preparations for the Brickyard 400 at the end of July. So, also like to inform the Council, we have extended two conditional offers of employment to two candidates. They've been scheduled for their physical and psychological evaluations, which will bring us up to full staff. Realistically, with everything coming back, we're probably looking at 1st of August for a, for a swearing and ceremony for both those candidates if they come back and everything is okay. Also like to acknowledge Officer Elise Herndon. This June, she completes her first year of service. She will no longer be a probationary officer. She will be a full member of the department. And she, as of this morning with the Police Commission, she was elevated to first-class patrol status. Also like to recognize Officer William Morris. We hired William back in February, and he has completed his field training phase, and he's been assigned to his permanent patrol shift. And we, thus far this year, through the end of May, we responded to 11,320 calls for service, and we have issued 2,534 citations.
Any questions for Chief?
No, I just want to comment, as far as the exiting of traffic out of Town of Speedway, I thought you guys did a great job of moving tremendous amounts of traffic, you know, with all four lanes of Crawfordsville Road, 25th Street, 10th Street, and I'm surprised 465 can handle all that.
We appreciate that, and we know there are always one or two intersections that don't go as planned, and we try to make those adjustments as quickly as possible. And we, we normally, out of probably 350,000 people between the Motor Speedway and us, we get about 20 complaints. So, and we also get a few folks that'll call and say nice things, so those get to be outweighed.
I heard some complaints from those trying to get downtown for the Pacer game.
Yes.
That a lot of them were walking, and, you know, they got scared, and they just, you know.
Our delay kind of set us back. Put it pretty close to the tip-off for the Pacers, so, but we got both of them in that day.
So, is that, you know, far as east of town in Indianapolis, you know, are you guys helping out and controlling that too, or is that most IBD is?
IMPD, everything inside the track and up in the north 40, it all goes eastbound. So, they had their plans in place, knowing that they had the Pacer game that night. They had staffing for the Pacer game aside from the Motor Speedway, and they were prepared for all those folks coming downtown. I'm pretty sure it's pretty busy down there that night, so.
I bet, yeah.
But, but no major issues this year.
Great.
All right, thanks, Chief. Next up, Fire. Chief Fishburne.
Thanks, Council. So, our monthly run totals for the month of May were 348, which is up about 60 from our normal. We're typically in the 280 to 290 range, so. 61% of that was EMS, 39% was Fire. You know, we've also completed everything from the month of May, and I think Chuck is pretty humble, talking about evacuating the track, and I like the fact that you recognize it, living on Auburn and working up in the thing, you know, you see it firsthand. We're evacuating a city the size of Orlando, right? And Orlando and hurricanes and tornadoes take six or seven hours to evacuate. We do it in two and a half. So, State Police, I think, you know, just everybody does a great job. And this year, they made some changes. My family always comes to the race, and they were home in record time, so I really appreciate that, too. Also want to thank Cheryl for letting us participate. Paulette Dusterberg, Administrative Assistant for PD. She and her husband this year helped me and my neighbor Jim, who has the antique car, do the pace car display on Main. And if you were over there, one of the cars was an actual pace car, but every vehicle in that line of seven was a replica of actual pace cars, and that, it went well. I mean, Jim was interviewed by Channel 6 and Channel 8 about his vehicle, so I went down to Rockin' on Main after we left the track, and it was, it was a blast. It was great. So, I really appreciate that. And definitely the biggest year that I can remember, so. We, we finished up our oral interviews for our hiring process. Chris and I will be doing 19 Chiefs interviews next Tuesday, and then from there, we will certify a list through our Merit Board, which will probably be our July meeting. We'll certify that list, and hopefully, 15 of these 19 will end up on that list. And that way, when we have an opening, or retirement, or disability, we can expeditiously to save that gap time of being, running short. So, we have a new General Manager at Marathon. We've been in contact with him, kind of their safety stuff. All of our guys will be going over to Marathon. There's been a few operational changes, so we'll send all of our guys through that. And then, our ladder truck is gonna be participating. Chris and I have both participated before. They have a huge event out at the airport, which is an incident of a plane crash or something like that, which all the Marion County departments would be involved. So, we'll be sending our ladder truck over to participate in that and be a part of that. It's actually a real-life, live-time, real-time event that then gets evaluated by different evaluators, so. Just a lot going on, waiting on the Brickyard, and just getting a little bit cleaned up from the race, so. If you don't have any questions, that's all I got.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next up, Parks and Recreation. Tammy Smith.
Good evening. I'm winging it today. You're a little busy. So, coming right out of May, Parks, no rest for the weary, we go right into summer camps. And last week, we finished our first week of summer camps, very successful. We also have swim lessons going on, and that's three-week lessons, so we're on our second week of that. More camps started today. We had a new one, Musical Jam Camp, which started today. I know Maddie was in it, and I don't know if you got any feedback yet, but it was a lot of fun. I loved seeing all the kids engaged in it, but it's just having fun with music. They don't have to know how to play music or anything, but we make musical crafts, and they did a lot of games and stuff with music. So, we're looking forward to continuing that camp tomorrow. And then we've got a third week and fourth week of camps, so this whole month is filled with them. So, it'll go by in a blur, but we're in the thick of it right now, so that's kind of what's going on there. Kind of going back a little bit, I wanted to thank Sarah for the Indy 500 workout the morning before the race. That is a fundraiser for Parks, and we raised about $280 for the people who came and did that workout. And that money is gonna be used for all the different activities that we've got planned on the Plaza on Main. So, we did have our first music on Main this past Friday. Been watching the radar all day, decided not to cancel it. Half hour before the start, it decided to shift and rain on us, but it was okay. We moved everybody up on the stage with the acoustic guitar player and had a great time, ended up being one of the fun moments, those memorable moments, so. And it was neat to see people walking up and down Main Street with their umbrellas. They'd walk by, they were dancing, kind of hoopin', hollerin', honkin', stuff like that. So, it was a lot of fun. So, looking ahead, I do have a, an animal show booked for, I believe it's July 30th. It is on the Plaza on Main schedule on the website. All the events for Plaza on Main is on the website, including Cheryl's movies, the music, and now the animal show. We also have all the concerts scheduled on the website. The first concert is June 26th, Jean Markowitz Band, and we've got eight total concerts scheduled for the summer. So, I'll stop there.
Nothing going on.
Yeah.
Any questions for Tammy?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy. And, last but certainly not least, Public Works. Ronnie Smith.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
We'll start with the Water Department. The plant treated 66 million gallons of water for the month of May. The water quality report is being processed from milling. Ongoing maintenance and groundskeeping. And now we'll move on to the Street Department. They work to race events, sewer cleaning, patching potholes, and continuing ride-of-way mowing. And now for the wastewater. Business as usual. Plant treated 151 gallons for the month of May. Groundskeeping and prudent maintenance, and conducting industrial inspections. That's all I have. Questions?
I've got a question for you. Can you give the public a status of, you know, 25th Street, the water break, Main break? Are you gonna give that?
I was going to. I reported, yep.
You got, you got?
Yep, I got it, yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
All right. Thanks, Ronnie.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Thanks, Ronnie. All right, moving on to Town Manager Report.
I have three items. The first two are with 25th Street. So, as you know, a week ago, 25th Street started. So, they started with the asphalt milling from Lynnhurst down. The project ultimately will go to Parkwood. They didn't get all the way there. We're taking that asphalt down to the base. We're replacing, and you'll notice there's concrete piled up if you've driven by there, because the major issue with that road has always been the base. It just wasn't necessarily done the right way, which leads to surface cracking and deterioration and that kind of thing. But the project started, the project is scheduled to be done by the end of October. That is contingent upon a lot of things, though, right? Weather, specifically, and whether they find any major issues, which I don't believe that they, they will. We did have a water main break last Friday. The water was bubbling up. It was last Friday, right? Didn't it start on Friday? The vibration and some of the construction kind of damaged the collars on one of the lines, which led to a break. If you don't know anything about water mains, they are under pressure, right? Continual water pressure of somewhere between 50 to 75 PSI, and ground getting hard, freeze-thaw, a lot of vibration, like the milling machine, can lead to those things breaking. I think it was good that it happened now. I'm trying to look at it as a silver lining of the, of the rain cloud, because I didn't want that to break, say, in nine months when we were done with that project. But that project will be ongoing, like I said, till the end of October. The trash collection has been impacted on that road. I believe this will be the second week that trash hasn't been picked up for 10 of those residences. That has been rectified. That will be picked up this Thursday by Waste Management, and there will not be this problem again. We have corrected that. I wanted to point out, there will be three major construction projects going on in town in addition to other private projects. The one that you see now, 25th Street, the one that will be starting soon, the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project, and then ultimately, the Roundabout improvement. Those three projects total in excess of $7 million. The town received in grant funding and donations, $4.9 million of that $7 million. I want to restate that, 4.9 of 7, right? That means, a good, good portion of that, I'm not gonna run the numbers or do the percentages, we got through other sources. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, Community Crossings Matching Grant Program, and the donation by the Big Al Trust. So, those three investments, I think that's a great sign for our community. We've been out, we've been pounding the pavement, trying to make our community better, pun intended, by the way, make it better, but also try to get those dollars that would go to some other community if we didn't apply for them. So, all of those projects should be under construction in the next 30 days, so it's gonna be a busy year here in, here in the Town of Speedway. All three of those projects should be substantially complete by the end of the year, and I think will make a huge difference in our community. So, the final thing I want to say is I want to thank everybody, all town staff, Clerk Treasures Department, Streets, Water, Sewer, Communication with Cheryl, Tammy Smith, Kyle Markley, Police and Fire. All of those departments work so many, many hours. You heard Cheryl enumerate her hours. I think other departments have numbers similar, and nobody does it with a frown, nobody does it begrudgingly. Everyone does it with a smile on their face. Did someone say no? With a smile on their face. They love Speedway, and I think that's why that event is so good. It is the greatest spectacle in racing, but I think our 130 employees kind of do a good job of making sure that it's put on the right way, so. So, I want to thank each and every one of them and hope that they continue with that commitment over the next 25 years. So, that's all I have for this evening.
I think, you know, Grant, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, when you go from 14,000 residents to 400,000, there's a tremendous amount of stress being put on the employees. I mean, they've got to have their head on a swivel all the time. I mean, there's always something going on and especially on our public safety end of it. And then far as, you know, the street department, their job begins well before the race of trying to just get, getting things staged and out there, ready for something that might happen, you know, and how to help direct people. And they're looking for all those people to, you know, give them direction of what's the best way to get everybody who wants to park right up front, right on the first, you know, park on the first street, right there.
The closer you park though, remember, it's going to take you longer to get there.
No, we don't think that far down the line. No, we don't want to walk, you know, that was the main thing. But no, it is a tremendous workload and relationship for getting that help. And I appreciate all the help from all over Marion County that comes in to help us out.
We couldn't do it alone, for sure.
No, there's no way. And, you know, hopefully they're as happy as we are that, you know, it's a successful event and every year we pull it off from that standpoint.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, we don't have enough firemen, policemen, we don't have enough barricades, we don't have enough cones. Without the city of Indianapolis and Marion County, I'm not sure we could put this on.
No.
So, I think that's a very good point.
State, federal.
Yeah, all of those organizations. We can't turn our 130 employees into the thousand that are needed for that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, well, last up is reports from council members and we'll start with Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Yes, kind of just dittoing off everyone, just thanks to all the town employees. I got to get a sneak peek up with the chief. That was really neat at the track to see their viewpoint on security and how a little bit of the operations of that. So, that was really eye-opening and a really neat experience to see that. Again, you don't think about it, right? You never question your safety at the track, which is amazing. With all those people around, you never, you don't. So, and that's because all the planning that you guys put into that. So, thank you to you and everyone who's up there. So, that's amazing. Again, thanks to Cheryl for all the hard work that you put in. Again, the hours are evident. We don't get, we don't see it all, but you do see it in your result, right, of your, of the effort in Rockin' on Main and again, just all the, all that you do and all the TV appearances that you push out and then you're still coordinating all those things and all the other things that happened in June, right? You can't just put a pause on everything and everyone. So, again, you could tell on Rockin' on Main that it was the biggest and best event that I've attended. So, really great event. And then again, just thanks to Tammy and the Parks Department. We look forward to using the Parks camps as much as we can, so my kids absolutely love them. Everyone does a great job, all the different departments in sports and the things you come up with, like the musical, you know, Matty came running and saying, "I made a maraca." I'm like, "Did you leave it there?" So, thank you for that.
Shaking it.
Yeah, I'm like, "Oh, great, yeah." So, just like, again, I just think that's what makes our town so special is these, you know, the camps. And I went through the camps and now I, you know, just to be able to see that, you know, you see the same kids and people. So, thank you for that. And then again, everyone who came out for the Indy 500 workout. And we have another one coming up, a yoga workout on June 21st. Again, it's a completely a fundraiser, 100% goes to the Parks Department, so that's on Saturday, June 20, Saturday, June 21st, yes. International Yoga Day, for those of you who don't know. Boys are welcome.
Assuming we don't know.
Boys are welcome. A few men show up to the, to our event, so bring your mat and bring your mat. Let's see how flexible you guys, that would be funny, bring you guys up on stage.
I'm the least flexible person ever.
All right, Grant, you'll be on the stage. And then, yeah, just a thanks to Dr. Trebley for inviting us all out to get a little sneak peek at the new football stadium and all that they have happening there. Very exciting for the fall, so that's all I have.
All right, Councilor Sean Harold.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of what we've heard already, but I did want to just say, you know, right now, it is a very exciting time in town. We've got a lot of big, exciting projects going on. And I know some, you know, with the construction, it can cause some inconvenience, but at the same time, just seeing that we are making these improvements and there's just a lot going on with the 25th Street, the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian project, the roundabout, the school renovations, you know, it's definitely an exciting time in Speedway. Lots of great improvements being made and I'm so excited to see the end results of these things. So, definitely, you know, gonna, gonna be going through some construction here over the next several months, but I really think the end result is going to be worth it. So, so thank you for bearing with us as we go through those things. And again, echoing, just all, I won't go down the entire list and we've heard it over and over, but all town employees, thank you so very much for everything you did all month, lots of hours and much, much appreciated. A great, successful month of May.
All right, thank you. Next up, Councilor Vince Snublet.
I just have a few things, comments to make. I think that Cheryl has been pretty quiet about the event that took place and that I found out that Clayton Anderson actually had an additional singer come up and help him out. And I think we need to make it, bring it to the public's attention. There've been several requests around town that should...
Not let that happen again. Is what I heard.
No, he tried to get her up there center stage, but you know, she, she just wanted to keep it all to herself. But I appreciate her coming up, representing the Town of Speedway onstage live on Main Street. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thanks Vince. Even though I'm, I've had some struggles tonight talking, I do have a few things. Like I said, it's been a long day, but you know, the month of May, as I said earlier, in my almost 20 years living in town, I think this has been the most attention, the most fun. There's just something special about this May and I think you've heard Doug say it and others, it's not like the 100th. It's just the 109th race. I mean, that alone, I mean, that long of event is just remarkable, but to have all of that influx of people and really no major issues throughout the month and especially on race day, it's a remarkable, remarkable feat. And just, you know, as I've talked with folks around the city of Indianapolis and others, they're just, they, the comments I've got of how well things were, how well the town's been represented, I mean, it isn't, it, at the end of the day, it goes to our town employees and all of the effort that they put in, our residents who embrace the culture of being Speedway Indiana. It is, may sound a little bit cliche, but it is unique and it is special. But a few other things, you know, that Cheryl had to work on was a couple ribbon cuttings that happened. On top of everything else, ATI, SEM Garage, the Purdue and DeLara Motorsports Program. I mean, we had a lot of other things outside of racing that were going on in the town, which kind of got overshadowed because of the race, but you know, busy, busy month. And I know it was busy, but it went over and went by pretty quickly, but we've got a whole 11 months to rest and plan for this next one. The other thing I do want to mention is the 117 new graduates of Speedway High School that graduated last Thursday was fortunate to be there because my daughter had graduated as well. It's a great ceremony. I think it was just a testament to the number of folks that had honors or technical honors was crazy. I mean, the, those kids now adults, young adults, they're going off to college, I think are very well-prepared and will represent the town well. So, with that said, it is 8:21 and I will call this meeting adjourned.